Zoning commission meeting. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Seeger.
Here.
Arsemont.
Here.
Robert.
Here.
Truxillo. Dougherty.
Here.
Milligan.
Here.
Gaines.
Here.
Martino.
Here.
Narcisse.
Here.
Troncoso.
Here.
Walker.
Here.
Barrios.
Here.
Binings. Mr. Chair, we have a quorum. However, at this time, we are missing one commissioner. If you would like to appoint an alternate to get a full commission.
Yeah.
All right.
Give me a name.
Harold Barrios. Would you like to appoint him?
Okay. And then when the regular commissioner comes in, we unappoint him? Okay.
That's correct.
It's getting too complicated. All right. Announcements pursuant to Section 200-2, parentheses H, parentheses 9, parentheses F, of the Unified Development Code. Members of the audience shall observe the following rules of conduct and decorum while in the meeting is in progress. Item 1, refrain from talking to other members of the audience in a loud or otherwise disruptive manner. Item 2 is refrain from initiating private conversations with commission members, staff, and legal counsel. Item 3, refrain from approaching the podium unless invited to do so by the chairman. Item 4, refrain from engaging in behavior which is not in keeping with proper and courteous conduct. Item 5 is refrain from cheers, jeers, applause, or any expression of approval or disapproval of comments made by any speaker or any actions taken by the commission. Item 6, refrain from discussing matters not on the public agenda unless proper procedures have been followed in adding the item to the agenda. And item 7, refrain from bringing any objects into the building and auditorium where the planning meeting is held, planning and zoning are held that are disruptive to the meeting. The chairman shall take whatever action is necessary to ensure that these rules are observed and the meeting proceeds in an orderly fashion. Please rise for the invocation by Commissioner Seeger and the pledge by Commissioner Narcisse. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for the beauty and glory of this day, for the sunshine and the rain, both literally and figuratively. We pray that you continue to bless those that serve the public and ask that you guide them as they endeavor to make St. Tammany Parish a little bit more like heaven on earth, always mindful that the greatest resource of our parish is we, the people. We ask that you guide us tonight, that we might act in the best interest of our parish and all of our endeavors. Thank you for the opportunity to serve, remembering always the amazing grace you've granted to this parish. God bless St. Tammany Parish. God bless the United States of America. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, in the commission's packet, you had the approval of the August 6 minutes. Commissioner Narcisse.
I make a motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Narcisse to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Robert Troncoso. Right?
It was John. It was John.
Oh. Sorry about that.
It's okay.
Please vote.
The motion to accept the minutes as written carries.
Thank you. All right, Helen Aaron, postponing the cases.
Yes. Yes, item number 7.
Wait a minute.
Item number 7.
All right.
Item number 7.
Item number 7.
There you go.
Item number 7.
Item number 7. On page 3, 2024-3917-ZC. This is a request to rezone from HC2 to HC3. We need to request to postpone this case until the next meeting to allow for re-advertising.
Okay. Let me read this one into the record. It's case 2024-3917-ZC. Existing zoning is HC2 Highway Commercial District. Proposed zoning is HC3 Highway Commercial District. Location, partial located on the north side of Louisiana Highway 21, east of Louisiana Highway 1085, Covington, Ward 1, District 1. It's 1.408 acres. Petitioner, St. Tammany Government. The owner is U.T. and Sue Jin Lee, revocable living trust, Council District 1.
Mr. Chair, we do have some speaker cards for that case, but they're also here for the case before that as well, so if they want.
Okay.
Ask if there's any objections to postpone in the audience.
Okay, now, I've got speaker cards here for some folks. And this 3917 is being requested by staff. So there's also another one that was right ahead of that 3916. Let me see, what have we got here? Okay. Helen, do we need 3916 postponed?
No.
Okay, all right. So y'all understand, just 3917 of the requested postponement. I've got a card here on Ellen Rains. I've got a card on James Ardon. Loretta Rivers. And didn't put her name on that one. Missy Bruce Ardon, somebody that lives on Laurel Leaf Lane. Okay. We'll need to get your name on the card.
For when we do 3916, probably. Just do that.
Okay, all right. All right, so those people that are named off, those were going to postpone at the request of staff, 3917. Commissioner Arsemont.
Yes, sir. I move that we approve the postponement for one month.
Okay. Commissioner Troncoso.
A second.
Second by Commissioner Troncoso. Please vote.
Motion to postpone for one month carries.
That's 3917. Okay.
We do not have any other requests.
No other requests, huh? All right, we go back to the beginning of the agenda. Item 1. Case is 2024-3901-ZC. Existing zoning is R2 Rural Residential District. The proposed zoning is R2 Rural Residential District and MHO Manufactured Housing Overlay. Location, partial located on the east side of Louisiana Highway 1083, north of Cleland Road, Covington, Ward 10, District 6. It's one acre. Petitioner is Bruce Weiner. The owner is ASF-C LLC, and it's Council District 6. Staff?
This is a request to rezone a one-acre parcel of land, which is part of a large parcel of land to allow for manufactured housing overlay, to allow the placement of one mobile home on the one-acre parcel that is shown in your packet.
Okay. Do we have someone here who wishes to speak on that? Mr. Marone.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Paul Marone, on behalf of Mr. Weiner and ASF-C LLC. This one-acre parcel, as Ms. Lambert just alluded to, is actually part of a much larger tract of land that is owned by ASF-C LLC and Mr. Weiner and his affiliated companies. All total there around this site, they own about 2,200 acres, give or take a little bit. And most of that property is within a mitigation bank, a wetlands mitigation bank, that Mr. Weiner has created there. As part of that mitigation bank, there is various maintenance work that needs to be done and oversight that needs to take place on the property. And he would like to have a caretaker on site. This request is solely to facilitate the caretaker having a place to reside on this tract. As you may notice from the materials in your packet, Mr. Weiner has been very careful as to where the site is located. First, it's only one acre. We're not looking to do anything more than that. This is not a development. It is simply for this one caretaker. Also, the one acre is set back over 200 feet. I think it's about 244 feet from the roadway. Very wooded between the roadway in this site, so there would be no visibility of the manufactured home from the roadway at all. It would be very much secluded within the larger tract. So we'd ask for your approval for the overlay for this specific and narrow purpose. And I'm happy to answer any questions that any of the commissioners might have at the appropriate time. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Marone. Does anyone in the audience wish to speak in favor of this? Does anyone wish to speak against? I'm going to close it to the public and bring it back to the commission. Commissioner Seeger. I move to approve. Motion by Commissioner Seeger to approve. Commissioner Arsemont.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arsemont. Commissioner Martino.
Yes, sir. Once development begins or construction, clearing the land, is there plans for other mobile homes, manufactured homes, at a later time?
No, no, only, the only plan or the only structure would be this one mobile home. And we would only clear this. Most of the site is actually already cleared. So it's really going to be a matter of cutting the road in, bringing the mobile home in, and that's it. There is no intent to have anything more than one location for this one caretaker.
Just for the caretaker while that work's being done?
Well, so the work, the maintenance and so forth, is really ongoing for, into the future in perpetuity. So that caretaker will stay there as long as he is able and is retained by Mr. Weiner. But there'll need to be a caretaker on site, and this will serve as that one location, though the person may change over the years.
Thanks.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Commissioner Troncoso.
Is there any chance to do a temporary? Because we're rezoning, or not rezoning, but we are changing the zoning on this property since it is for a temporary arrangement. Is there any?
Well, according to Mr. Marone, it is not a temporary arrangement considering that it will be, you know, this is a wetlands mitigation bank, so it's going to be maintained as a wetlands mitigation bank for many years in the future. And the objective is to always have someone on site, correct me if I'm wrong, to have someone on site to be able to do the regular maintenance of the mitigation site as anything that may be required. Now, you know, I'm assuming someone is designated for that particular job right now, but it may change in the future. But if you look at the property, the property is almost 2,100 acres. So it will be just one acre in the middle, and as stated, it's just for the purpose of one mobile home.
Well, the only issue is relative to, and logically, it makes sense. But the question is that we're setting a precedent out here. There's no mobile home, manufactured home overlay in this area at all. Now, they do have a large amount of land, but again, we're establishing a mobile home overlay for the first time in the area. Is that correct?
Well, that's what it appears to be. That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Brittany Roberts.
I just wanted to say, I think considering the sensitive nature of the wetlands and, you know, the general nature of the property, having a manufactured home is probably in the best interest. Not bringing any fill in. I did want to ask, are there already onsite, is there onsite wastewater or utilities available already?
So there are no utilities in this area. This whole area is on individual wells, and that's what will be here as well.
So there's no well existing or onsite wastewater?
Not in this area, no.
Okay.
Okay. All right. We've cleared the board, so is everyone prepared to vote? Please vote.
appear to be missing one vote. Thank you. Motion to approve carries.
Okay, thank you. All right, we go to item 2. Case is 2024-3908-ZC. Existing zoning is S1 Suburban Residential. Proposed zoning is S1 Suburban Residential and MHO Manufactured Home Overlay. Location, partial located on the west side of East Second Street, south of Arthur Road, Covington, Ward 3, District 2. It's .295 acres. The petitioner is Dion Harrison Lee, and the owner is Dion Harrison Lee, Council District 2. Staff?
This is a request to rezone the property to manufactured housing overlay to allow for the placement of a mobile home on a property that is 101 feet by 130 feet. And, you know, due to the size of the property, only one mobile homes would be allowed if the zoning change is approved.
Okay, thank you. Is Dion Harris Lee here? Good evening. You have anything to add?
Yes, I'm just trying to get the property rezoned so that I can put a mobile home on it. I'm trying to get the property rezoned so that I can put a mobile home on it.
Okay, and that's in the staff's comments. Okay.
Yes, and there are several mobile homes in the area. There's literally one next door to the property currently.
Okay. All right, anything else?
No.
Okay. Anyone else in the audience wish to speak in favor? Anyone wish to speak against? I'm going to close it to the public and bring it back to the commission. Commissioner Seeger.
Ms. Harrison, Harrison Lee, I have a question for you. For your manufactured home, does it meet current HUD standards?
I haven't actually purchased it yet, but it will.
And do you understand the parishes skirting and taking off the wheels and things like that?
Yes.
That being said, I move to approve.
Thank you.
Motion by Commissioner Seeger to approve. Commissioner Arsemont.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arsemont. Any further discussion? Please vote.
Motion to approve carries.
Okay, we go to item 3. Case is 2024-3911-ZC. Existing zoning is L1 Large Lot Residential District. Proposed zoning is L1 Large Lot Residential District and MHO Manufactured Housing Overlay. Location, partial located on the south side of North Ponchartrain Drive, west of Silver Road, being 62790 North Ponchartrain Drive, Lacon, Ward 7, District 7. It's .51 acres. The petitioner is Danielle Williams, and the owner is George Williams. It's Council District 7. Staff?
This is a request to rezone a .5 acre parcel to allow, to MHO manufactured housing overlay to allow for the placement of one mobile home on a property.
Okay, thank you. Is George Williams or Danielle Williams? Good evening. You have anything to add?
Just that his house right now currently is very old. And instead of remodeling, we figured that rezoning, since most of the area around him is already manufactured homes, so we just wanted to kind of match that and upgrade it.
Okay. All right. Anyone in the audience wish to speak in favor on this? Anyone wish to speak against? I'm going to close it to the public and bring it back to the commission. Commissioner Narcisse.
I'm familiar with the property. I'm familiar with the area. I make a motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Narcisse to approve. Brittany Roberts.
Yes, I do have a question. What is the frontage on North Ponchartrain Drive for the property? There wasn't a.
What is the what?
What is the exact frontage on Ponchartrain Drive for this property? Like, how much of it is on the street? How wide is it?
About 120?
Oh, goodness, okay. All right. And you did understand that this is in a parish-determined critical drainage area? Okay.
Okay. Commissioner Martino.
Yeah, my question also for you. So where the older home is that you spoke of, is that to be demolished and a manufactured home is to be built on the same footprint?
Correct.
Okay. That was it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner Seeger.
I'll second the motion.
Second by Commissioner Seeger. Any further discussion? Please vote.
The motion to approve carries.
Okay, thank you. All right, we go to item 4. This is case 2024-3913-ZC. Existing zoning is Lawton Estates HUD Land Unit Development Overlay. Proposed zoning is R1 Residential District. Location, partial located on the east side of Military Road, north of I-10, south of Sycamore Drive, Slidell, Ward 8, District 9. It's 77.39 acres. The petitioner is St. Tammany Parish Government, and the owner is Oak Island Corporation Incorporated, Toby Low, and it's Council District 9. Staff?
This is a 77.39 acre parcel that was rezoned to planning and development with the hope to be developed as a residential property or several residential lots. The request was approved in 2000. No further action from the property owner took place as far as moving forward with submitting the plan for tentative or preliminary to go in front of the planning commission. So at this time, the request is, you know, to bring the property back into compliance with the surrounding zoning and to rezone the property to R1 Rural Residential District. While this is initiated by Parish Council and St. Tammany Parish, you know, government here, we have a representative here, you know, if anyone has any questions regarding that zoning change.
Okay. All right, thank you. This is Mr. Duverney. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. As Helen mentioned, 24 years ago, I represented Oak Island Corporation in this HUD zoning that you have in front of you. It got approved, 151 lots, again, 24 years ago. The intent was to sell the property. It was under contract of sale, subject to the zoning, and subject to the purchase of obtained their own financing. We were fortunate to get the zoning approved. The zoning approved. Financing was not available to that client at the time. The property is laid dormant for the last 24 years. I would say probably a month or so ago, Councilman Kugel contacted Toby Low, the owner, and said basically, "Look, this has been a dormant piece of property for all these years. Are you aware of the fact that your HUD zoning has expired?" I double-checked with Helen and reconfirmed the fact that after two years, if you hadn't done anything, your HUD zoning is not effective. The property was dormant. I suggested that the parish would come in and initiate the zoning change to R1, which is a minimum lot size of five acres per lot. We have no objection to it whatsoever. And again, we're not the petitioner. I'm only here as the representative and owner and probably the only living person other than Helen that remembers being around here 24 years ago. So anyway, that's it. That's it in a nutshell. The property got approved. It's been sitting there all these years. And Councilman Kugel recognized that something needed to be done to bring it into compliance with the area. We have no issues with it, no objections to it. You'll see on three sides, it's R1. We would be R1 also. So anyway, I'm just here to answer any questions you might have. But that's it. We're just going for the zoning. We have no plans for any more than we've had in the last 24 years what to do with it. So that's it. If anybody's got a question, I'd be glad to entertain it.
Okay, we've got a card, somebody that'd like to speak against. So will, anyone else in the audience wish to speak in favor? All right, we'll go to Sarah Schmoak. That might not be the right pronouncing.
Schmoki.
Good evening.
Good evening. My only concern is I've grown up in this neighborhood my entire life. My family, many generations before me, we've lived on this land, especially where it's going to butt into Sycamore Magnolia Drive. You know, we already live in a flood zone. We choose to, you know, we live where we live, and we rebuild throughout the years. You know, our roads have deteriorated, which the guys, y'all, are working on, which is great. We really appreciate it. Still, in the end of the day, where they're trying, you know, understand this is undeveloped, but it's still wetlands. It's still wild. Like, we care for the wild around there. Most people don't even realize what goes into living on a swamp. We love it. It's home. And no matter what they do, whether they build up the land, they build up our homes, they raise this. At the end of the day, our neighborhood and neighborhoods other than ours, River Gardens in particular is what I'm speaking on, won't exist, and the animals won't exist. The trees will still be cut down. The gators will be killed. Like, and there's a lot to it, so we just, I would rather not, just like my parents stood up for it against it years ago. I'm here to stand up against it now. Like, that's home to us. I know people really don't understand that too much, but our kids learn livelihoods in that same area. The area now is compacted down, and dirt roads actually used to be so unique. The area now is compacted down and dirt roads actually used to be so unique and so cool when we were kids because it was so historical back there, but they destroyed all that years ago. And they covered in a canal that for the past probably 20 years, we have flooded even worse than we ever have. Thanks to whoever came in and put in some culverts recently, really appreciate that. That has truly helped a lot. But again, at the end of the day, it's not going to be in the best interest of neighbors that have been there for generations to been, you know, we're not going to benefit any from this. You know, it's going to just destroy our land and our homes. And at the end of the day, and I'm thinking 50 years from now for my son, you know, and whatnot, like, I just think that should be considered. The wildlife, I know that sounds crazy to a lot of people, but, you know, I love animals. Like I said, we all do back there. And we do a lot to, where we don't have to bother you guys to call y'all out for pest control and all that stuff. You know, we situate a lot of wild, so just please always consider the life that's already there. It doesn't need more houses on Military. We need to keep some type of nature in this parish. And it's beautiful over there. You know, you just build a boardwalk. You know, we don't have to keep building homes over neighborhoods that won't last when those homes are built in years from now, you know, to come. They'll just be washed out. You know, my, the back road Magnolia is pretty much already to that extent. And, you know, I mean, they live back there. That's their choice. But I'm here, you know, for me. And I really hope y'all hear me and consider that, like, generations, people have been in one spot and we've never bothered anyone, never asked for anything. When floods come, we don't call you guys. We get in our boats and we go help each other. We're making food at one house and booting it to the next, you know, like, and we just ask y'all to consider, you know, you natives, the ones that have been in the parish forever over these corporations, please.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else in the audience wish to speak against? All right, we'll go to rebuttal. Mr. Deverney.
Just a point of information, I guess. You know, this PUD was approved, dormant now, 151 lots, 77 acres. We've agreed that a five, a five acre minimum lot size is appropriate. When you take 77 acres, you're going to lose at least 10% to the street right of ways. So you're going to wind up with about 69 acres that you can develop. Divide that by five. We're talking about 14 lots. 14 lots. So, you know, just, just take that in consideration. On 77 acres, 14 lots, you're going to have a lot of, a lot of available landmass, especially when you get into avoidance of wetlands. We went through all of these issues. You can imagine, even 24 years ago, when we talk about 151 lots, we did, we have wetlands delineations. Obviously, they got to be updated and all this sort of thing. But there was a lot of sensitivity that went into the development of that property. One thing I'll say also, and I'm not here to make a commitment on what we're going to do if we're going to do anything. If you look at the plat that was laid out back in the day, you'll notice, if you look at it closely, where River Gardens is, there's no access. There is no access from River Gardens onto this property. Okay? You got to look at it close. You'll see one street that stubbed out to Hemlock, but you don't see any access from our property onto Hemlock, onto Sycamore. What's not shown is that at the upper end of that drawing, there's, it seems to be, would have been a right of way. That goes all the way to Military Road. That was the access to this property. And I think at the time, that was probably in response to some of the concerns that the people had in River Gardens. You know, we, we understand what y'all want to do, may or may not have had a problem with necessarily, but in order to avoid impact on them, the street was dedicated or would have been dedicated all the way out to Military Road. Again, I'm not here to say that we're going to do anything. We're here for the discussion of zoning. And all we're saying, we have no objection to the parish's inclination that we should go ahead and rezone this to R1, where every minimum lot is five acres. And again, if you look on page one, item four of the table, everything around us except River Gardens is L2, half acre size lots. So again, I think, just following Mr. Kugel's suggestions, that we seem to be appropriate, or he seems to be appropriate, or the council seems to be appropriate, and with this request to get a little bit more in line with what's out there now. We have no objection to this. This is my only point being here this afternoon.
Okay, thank you. All right, Ms. Schmoke, do you have any rebuttal? Pardon?
She doesn't get rebuttal.
Okay.
And actually, I believe there's a road, Sycamore, that we're speaking of that go, when you turn off, coming through the neighborhood off Oak onto Sycamore, there is actually, they've already tore down, it used to be our mud trails, road access straight from our neighborhood into their neighborhood. So I'm not sure what he's speaking of, but they've even blocked it off recently. Like, so there is absolutely a road that leads from our neighborhood into this development. Because it's, you know...
All right, thank you. All right, Legal told me too, that we don't normally have a rebuttal on, against, so I'm learning too as we go through some of these new things. So, all right, I'm going to close it to the public and bring it back to the commission. Commissioner Gaines.
Ma'am, I just wanted to make a clarification, wait for you, just to clarify the proceedings tonight. This is just a zoning. This is not for them to put anything there or to, that would be during a planning commission. So please watch out for any notifications that you see, because that's when they'd be making plans to develop that into some kind of subdivision. This is just to change the, the current zoning to what the surrounding zoning is. It's just a correction on the, the tax assessment. Does that make sense? So this has nothing to do with whether they're going to put there, anything there or not. Okay? All right. With that, I make a motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Gaines to approve. Commissioner Brittany Robert.
Um, I just wanted to address Ms. Sarah. Is that your first name?
Yes.
Um, I love what you said. I just wanted to let you know that this would actually take the zoning so that less homes are able to be put in there in the future. So right now, the original PUD has expired, but if it is denied, it still stands, I'm sorry, if we deny it, it still stands as a PUD. This actually takes it down so that there would only be five acre parcels maximum. And nobody buys a five acre parcel and tears every tree and piece of wetlands down because like you, we like living in the country, in the woods. So this is actually beneficial to what you want to do, what you think should be done with this property. And keeping that in mind, motion to second.
Anything else? Any other comment? Tom, you were up on the board.
There was a second already.
Okay. All right, we've got a motion and a second. I guess my concern, honest and truly, Steve, is that's very wet back in there. And I'm going back not 25 years, I haven't been here that long. But it just seems like a bad place to try and put residential unless you're going to elevate. Now, I'm not sure, right off the top of my head, what the minimum elevation is or maximum elevation is in that area, but it is very wet and I'm going to stop there.
Okay. And again, we're only here to talk about zoning, but if you want to talk somewhat about wetlands, I mean, it's a critical drainage area for sure. And if you're brought onto the site on a particular lot, has to be compensated by, and mitigated by moving some off or elevating the property. It's called, the name of the, the ownership is Oak Island. I mean, if you look at it, you'll see it's basically an island. There's no question. You have to go through some lower areas to get to it. Matter of fact, the parish, just in the last month, installed two, I think, the 83-inch culverts there. And the lady mentioned that, and the parish did that at their expense. They, they came in and said that this was something that they wanted to do in order to improve drainage long gone by. But all I'm saying is that there's a realistic factor here that if you're going to be at 10 feet, which I think is the elevation basically, and whatever the minimum finished floor elevation is, plus a, an additional freeboard established by the parish, you have to get to that level. So I don't think there's much question that you will have elevated houses in some fa... We're only talking about 14 of them on 77 acres. 14. 14.
Well, this will get into the planning phase.
Absolutely.
At that point in time. But I just wanted to be sure that you were aware that how wet it is and course, you've been around for, for 25 years, I think?
On this one, 24. I mean, it was the year 2000s, last time I was here.
Okay.
On this one.
All right, Brittany Robert.
Um, I just wanted to say that yes, while the base flood right now is 13 with a one-foot freeboard, as of January 1st, any FHA loans, new HUD rules put into place a two-foot freeboard at January 1st. And I know St. Tammany is already looking at addressing the fill restrictions parishwide. I don't think that's going to be a concern.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we've had comments, so it's time to vote. Please vote.
The motion to approve carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, the next item is item five. The case is 2024-3914-ZC. Existing zoning is HC2 Highway Commercial District and ML Low Multiple Family Residential District. Proposed zoning is MM Medium Multiple Family Residential District. Location parcel located on the west side of Airport Road, south of Redwood Street, being 61325 Airport Road, Slide L, Ward nine, District 11. It's 2.63 acres. The petitioner is St. Tammany Parish Government. The owner is Airport Road Associates Limited and it's Council District 11. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, we have five cases which are very similar, although they're on different properties. The reports pretty much read the same and the reason for the request is pretty much the same. I was going to see if you'd be okay with hearing all five cases at once, although we would obviously vote on them separately.
I have no problem with hearing the cases together. They'll be voted on separately. Who's here to speak on this? Anyone?
I can read those cases in record if you like.
Yeah, it's parish.
It's case number 3914, 3918, 3920, 3921, and 3929.
All right. Let's go ahead and read the first one then, and then we'll go from there.
So, as you all know, the new Unified Development Code was adopted and set to be enacted August 2nd. So we've, we've been dealing with the new Unified Development Code. Apartments or multifamily development used to be allowable in HC2, HC2A, HC3, PBC, and multifamily districts. That's under the old code. The new code now allows them under the HC3, PBC, and multifamily. So they were essentially taken out of the HC2 and HC2A zoning districts. We have several apartment complexes in the parish where, which are existing and have been developed within the past few decades that were currently zoned HC2 that became legal non-conforming uses. And what that means is although the uses match the zoning, they, they're vested under certain rights to expand or say if they burn down or something happened to them by act of God, they would have six months to apply for and obtain a permit or else they couldn't rebuild. So at the request of the council, the, the Planning Department essentially did a, an inventory of these apartment complexes. We looked at the number of units in each development and based on the allowable density, either in the multifamily zoning classifications or the HC3 Highway Commercial District. We are coming before you with five requests to rezone these apartment complexes so that they're no longer non-conforming. They just match the correct zoning for the new UDC. And we can take these one by one if you like. They are all separate requests, but that's the reason for all of them.
Okay, we don't need to take them one by one as far as the description and everything, but we need to, to take individual votes on these. I've got, do we need to have people in the audience comment on these? We have cards?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I would advise that you read, you know, the first case and ask in the, of the audience if anyone is, you know, has any objection or would like to speak, or if the owner is present.
Okay.
And then ask for anyone who would like to, to comment.
Thank you, Helen. All right, the, uh, first case is 3914. Okay? Pardon?
We read that into the record.
Yeah, okay. Is anyone here to represent the owner on this? Well, the owner's St. Tammany.
Anybody in favor?
Pardon?
Anyone who wants to speak in favor?
Anyone wish to speak on this?
What's the number, sir?
Pardon? 3914.
14.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry. Also, you missed one case. 3916 is part of the apartments as well. So we can just reference that as well. But we have a few cases or speaker cards for that case.
Okay, but that's on down. 3916?
It's the next case on the agenda after 3914.
Yeah, okay. Okay. All right, we've got, no one wishes to speak on 3914, so I'm going to, I guess, close it to the public and, and take a vote on that one, so. We've got a motion and a sec.
No, we need, we need a motion.
We need to get a motion. Okay. All right, Commissioner Gaines.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Gaines to approve. Commissioner Arsomont.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arsomont. Commissioner Ben Martino.
Uh, yeah, so for staff, starting with this one, I know we have multiple, these properties are, we're not changing any type of development. These are just to bring them into conformity. And we're starting here with, again, just making sure that they, based on the, the new UDC code. Okay?
Yes, sir. Yeah, that, so the requested zoning for this case, which is 3914, is MM Multiple Medium Family Residential District, which allows 2,500 square foot per one unit. So based on the total number of units which are developed today, that's what would bring the site into compliance.
Okay.
Nothing else.
Brittany Robert?
Um, just on all of these cases, is density increased at all on any? Is there a density increase on any of these?
Each, each one of them, you know, carefully studied and, and looked at, you know, to make sure that we were not trying to increase the...
Right, so it's very comparable. If, if, okay, perfect.
Okay. So now we can take a vote on this. Okay. All right, please vote on 3914.
Motion to approve case 2024-3914-ZC carries.
Thank you. All right, the next one is 2024-39... No, wait a minute, that's, that one's not one of the...
Yes, it is.
3916, yes.
3916?
It is.
Yeah, okay.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If my understanding...
Correct. 3916 is not in this group.
Correct. Thirty-nine sixteen is not in this group. Therefore, I wish to...
We have to read into the record.
I'd like to, I'd like to go through all of these at one time, and I move that we do that. We reconfigure the agenda. To meet that means...
Mr. Seager? It is important to read each case one after the other to allow for the public to be able to come to the podium and voice their opinion. Some people are here representing the parcel as well.
I agree. I just... So, item number six is not included in this list.
Yeah, you know, it was just an error on our part, but it is included.
I'm sorry. I resent that then.
I'm sure that other people are making some mistakes on this. All right, so this is thirty-nine sixteen. This is twenty-two-four thirty-nine sixteen-ZC. Existing zoning is HC2 Highway Commercial District. Proposed zoning is HC3 Highway Commercial District. Partial located on the north side of Louisiana Highway twenty-one, east of Louisiana Highway ten eighty-five, Covington, Ward One, District One. It's one point seven acres. Petitioner is Saint Tammany Parish Government. The owner is Acadian Village Highway Two LLC, Brian D. Burns, and it's Council District One. And we don't need to read this back into the record.
We have to see...
What?
Go through the speaker cards. Is anybody in favor?
Okay. We've got thirty-nine sixteen. We've got several speaker cards on this. So, I'll start off with Ellen.
If he's four, he has to go first.
Pardon?
If he's first, I mean, if you want to do it differently, but if he's four, then he'll have to go first.
Okay, well, he's four, and the rest of them are...
They're for against.
Against, okay. All right, so we're gonna go with... Mr. Jeff Shane is the person that is four on this, so we'll go with Mr. Shane first. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Honorable Commission. Jeff Shane of the Jones Chiselle Law Firm, Po Box eighteen-ten in Covington, represent the owner of this project, which is Acadian Village Highway twenty-one LLC. And I have been involved in the history of this legislation, as well as kind of the subject matter of apartment legislation for the last six to nine months as it relates to various matters before the council. So, as the adoption of the UDC approached, it was obvious that properties zoned HC2 and HC2A that had in fact been developed, had apartments in place, would soon lose their entitled right, if you will, to continue that use. So, in the legal terms, that we consider that to be a nonconforming but legal use. It's grandfathered. Also with a proviso, though, that if there is destruction of some sort, by way of example hurricane, fire, et cetera, fifty percent or more, if in fact the apartment or multifamily is no longer permitted use, you don't have the ability to rebuild your investment. That obviously doesn't make owners very happy. It doesn't make lenders very happy. That doesn't make insurance companies very happy. You can imagine the consequences, and also to the extent that you have occupants that are dispossessed, and you're not able to rebuild and put them back in their units. So, as this legislative discussion evolved through the months, it became obvious that the council was very firm and did not believe that apartments and multifamily belonged in HC2 or HC2A any longer. And that's a decision that my client respects. We disagreed because we knew we were about to lose our permitted use, but we respected the fact that that was the legislative will. So, as we continued discussions, the council entertained two ideas, one of which was the adoption of an emergency ordinance at its August meeting to protect the current status of these apartment projects that are located in HC2 and HC2A. Why so? Well, the new code went into play August two, so that in the worst scenario, if we had a hurricane August three, you could see the problem it would create. Well, that emergency ordinance is being continually renewed each thirty day by the council. And the council also graciously, because they studied all of this very closely, they asked staff to try to identify how many HC2 and HC2A properties do we have projects in throughout the parish? Who would we be leaving out, if you will, or leaving in the cold, putting at risk if we did not take some action? We had been a part of the process. Obviously, we didn't... We just volunteered our property and said we would love some protection, and there are others, as you know, on your agenda. So, I come before you this evening requesting that you make a recommendation to HC3, because HC3 does allow the existing use of apartments or multifamily to continue to be a permitted use. It would obviously prohibit the scenario where you might be illegal nonconforming use. A couple of things in particular with regard to this property that I think you should note. If you look at page one of your staff report and take a look at the zoning history, staff, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it first became ASICS multifamily in nineteen ninety. You see that designation of ordinance nine oh dash oh oh three? The significance of that is that this zoning has been in place for thirty-four years, and I'm not exactly sure of the age of this particular project. It's twenty-eight units, but I would say it's at least twenty-five years. And it may be thirty to thirty-four. It may have been rezoned to facilitate the construction of this project. So, that's the first point I make. And the second point I make, and I won't be redundant, but I do think staff did a great job on page two of your staff report under multifamily rezoning effort with the items one, two, and three, which I have and staff have verbalized to you, or let us just say summarized, but it again puts things together. Last but not least, if you look in the middle of page two of your staff report, please note the consistency of this requested change with new directions twenty forty. There are two goals, one point three and one point eight, that staff believes that this request clearly falls in line with. So, with all that having been said, we ask you to consider recommending to the council the rezone of this existing thirty or so year apartment project from HC2 to HC3. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Shane. And everyone else is wanting to speak against, so we'll start off with Ellen Rains. Good evening.
Good afternoon, good evenings. I live in the Timberland subdivision, and this in question apartment complex is immediately behind my home. When I bought this property, I knew, of course, that that development was there, and I think that at the time that it was built, it was very tasteful because there are no windows on that wall of the building that would be including on my property or my privacy. I certainly do appreciate what the gentleman had to say. However, if you change the zoning, I understand he can't do what he needs to do if a hurricane comes, but if you do change the zoning, that also gives him the right... I understand, if I'm... Correct me if I'm wrong. I understand that he could now knock down a few buildings and build something bigger because now he has the additional zoning privilege to construct something bigger or more. Also, I understand that in this rezoning, there's also a vacant piece of property that is involved in this rezoning. There is no need, in my understanding, to rezone an empty piece of property. It can remain to be a zoning two, and whoever develops that piece of property would have to abide by that zoning two. I, like I say, our subdivision is very nice. This apartment complex is there presently. When I bought the home, I knew it was there. It's within feet behind my fence, but I bought it with that understanding. If this gentleman is allowed to increase the development of that property, according to the three zoning, he could go up much higher, then that also affects my property values. And so, I know he's in a catch twenty-two if he says when it's destroyed, it can't be replaced as... But that's okay. It is what it is, because I would like to also protect the value of my property. So, if you change this zoning, then you give him the complete right to destroy what he wants what's there and build something bigger and better. So, I would really hope that you would consider... I know that he has a point, but that you would please consider the neighborhood that is bound with this property, and, you know, just please let us protect our property values and not allow this gentleman to expand any development that would encompass the right for him to do that in this HC development, HC rezoning. I thank you very much.
All right, thank you. James Ardon?
Thank you. I think we can all agree that if Mr. Burns has been harmed by the change in the Unified Development Code, that he needs to be corrected. I don't think we have any argument with that. However, as part of the Unified Development Code, I understand that part of the reason was to eliminate a lot of the issues involving perhaps spot zoning. Well, I think you're gonna be... You're gonna find that you're gonna be living with spot zoning all of your life. It's just a matter of the way things are. Having said that Mr. Byrne has the right to be made right, my feeling would be, why can't he be grandfathered in completely? Some of you may think, well, you know, we'll have to do that with others as well, but why take the drastic step of going from HC2 to HC3 when he can be grandfathered in? Now, the argument made about the hurricane coming and developing and destroying fifty percent of the property, and it can be built... Well, if it's grandfathered in with that provision that it can be done, the parish council could do that very easily, signed by the president, and Mr. Burns would be made correct. We're not going to an extra zone.
Okay. Thank you. Your time is up.
Okay, well, just can I say a few other things?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Two minutes? Okay. All right, I've got three more cards in the speaking time on those. Because of the time limit, it's three... It's two minutes on each one, so...
Thank you. I'll be very brief. I have three major concerns with the rezoning of the classification. Number one, the doors that it opens up for greater density. I should have said my property butts up behind the apartment complex as well. Rezoning also opens doors for other types of things to be built there, such as nightclubs, bars, live entertainment, larger venues, movie theaters, et cetera. And then the other thing is the precedent that it sets, I think, for other properties along that area that also join our subdivision. And so, I'm a fairly new homeowner in the neighborhood, and I'm concerned about what this does to our property values. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, Missy Broussard? I can't hear you.
My card has no name on it. It's a gel booty. Why, instead of doing the HC3 highway, why can't we change it to the multi, like all the ones, the multifamily? Why wouldn't the property... Everything else in that area is HC2. So, if he changes to HC3, then the whole, all the empty lots are gonna be able to be HC3.
I can't answer your question. I'll have to get staff to answer. Ellen, Erin?
Mr. Chairman, would you mind to ask the petitioner or Mr. Jeff Shane how many units are in this apartment complex? I seem to have left that in my office and don't have it on me right now.
Okay. Mr. Shane?
Twenty-eight units, and the entire site is utilized, as you can see on the Google that you have on your staff report.
Okay, thank you.
So, the reason that staff moved forward with requesting this be zoned HC3 rather than a multifamily zoning is because it's on a state highway. It's roughly, I think, twelve to thirteen hundred foot from a confluence of ten eighty-five and twenty-one, so that's basically two state highways. There's no apartment complexes in this immediate area. Where we suggested multifamily zoning, you'll see other apartment complexes in the area that have multifamily zoning. Mostly, the zoning along this corridor is HC2, and there's heavy commercial uses. This site is already built out. The only difference between the HC2 and the HC3 as it relates to this property being developed is the max size building. The height is all the same, the lot area, the lot coverage, the setbacks, it's all the same.
So, even though he went to HC3, they wouldn't be able to go more than two stories?
Would you like me to answer?
Yes.
Yeah, so the max height for HC2 is sixty foot, and the max height for HC3 is sixty foot, so there would be no change.
But they could have a hundred-plus units for HC3?
That's under the old code, but yeah, there's no cap on units. You can develop the property up to fifty percent under the Highway Commercial zoning classification.
So, that's under the old code, and the old code went out what, the second? Is that right?
August second, yes, sir.
Right, so the HC3 code would allow him to have more building, more property in that area. They would have a hundred plus, which HC3 is a hundred plus.
The current code allows the property to be developed up to fifty percent with primary and secondary buildings. You still have to accommodate for pervious and impervious cover under our new code. You still have to accommodate, you know, drainage or detention requirements, parking requirements, landscape requirements. So, there's a lot of things in play that would regulate the number of units under the Highway Commercial. There's not a specific cap on them, though.
But the other concern is if that one goes to HC3, then everything on that whole strip is gonna be allowed to be HC3.
I wouldn't put that in the...
Everything is HC2 in our whole area on Highway twenty-one.
But it will have to come back before the commission here to go to an HC3, okay? Maybe it's a game, but by the same token, we don't... If, just because we have one HC3, doesn't mean that everything will have to go to HC3.
Well, if he only has twenty-eight units, why can't he be the multifamily? What is the restrictions for multifamily?
Well, you're out of time right now, so it'll have to be... Okay, did you get the other card?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So, all of the speakers have spoken, so... Jeff or the petitioner? Okay, Mr. Shane, you got a three-minute rebuttal.
In particular, the councilman Smith of District One is not entertaining the notion of rezoning that entire corridor to HC3. The thinking was simply to rezone a property that had a use of thirty-plus... property that had a use of 30-plus years to make sure that they would not be put at risk. The idea that zoning it up to HC creates more density or more height or more capacity, I think all of that's false. The standards that are in place as it relates to how many units depends on lot coverage, the amount of parking, the amount of green space, the amount of setbacks. I can't tell you that, I don't think staff or I have done a detailed analysis as to if this property was zoned HC3 and there were no improvements on it, how many units could you put on it? But my guess is it would be very close to what the existing count is, 28. I don't want there to be some phantom fear that either by hurricane, fire, or what if the developer just decided to demolish the site, that suddenly there's going to be a five-story, 100-unit apartment complex. This is 1.7 acres, and if you look at the size of it on the Google, you'll see that it pretty much consumes the site that is there. That doesn't mean that I don't respect the comments coming from the neighbors, because I'm sure if I lived there, I would have the same concerns. But I don't think the concerns are valid as it relates to a fear of increased height, which staff has already discussed or dismissed, and also increased density. The other thing that I would like to say is that the idea of having nightclubs and other uses there are also mitigated, correct me if I'm wrong, staff, but when you have those types of uses in the proximity of a residential zone, there are distances of separation, and there's also a need, do we still call it an entertainment overlay, perhaps?
That was taken out of the code, but there are still location differences.
Okay. But I mean, the point is, is that it does not open Pandora's Box for multiple uses that would not be appropriate to abut residences. So again, I don't want those concerns to be, if they're not real, I think we need to discuss that tonight to make sure that everyone understands that. At the end of the day, the Councilman Smith and the council simply want to preserve the status quo through an appropriate zone that does not require an analysis. The last but not least, it is not possible to grandfather the entire project without a rewrite of that section of the code. And I believe that the thinking would be that when you do have properties that in fact are grandfathered, there's a reason that they should revert to the initial uses if they're more than 50% destroyed, because they're not zoned for that use any longer. That's not what we have here. Thank you for the time.
All right. Thank you. All right. So, we've had speakers on both sides. I'm gonna close it to the public and bring it back to the commission. Commissioner Orsman?
Yeah. First, a couple of comments. One is, the citizens definitely deserve the voice to be heard, so we always welcome that. I think some of the things that you were concerned about were addressed by staff, which we appreciate that as well. In saying that, I move that we make a motion to accept the change.
What would be the zoning classification under, based on the size and the 28 units for multifamily? What would the, would be the appropriate zoning classification under multifamily?
We would need to research it, but...
It would be, medium multifamily residential district would allow 29 units.
Which is the majority of what we've seen of the other ones that we wanted to do.
Well, so far, we've only seen the one.
Yeah, I know, but the rest are pretty much that way, correct?
Yes, sir, but I would just stress, they're, they're not on state highways, and they're not, they're around other apartment complexes that have similar zoning classifications.
I guess a question I have for Mr. Shane would be, there's two pieces of large, fairly large pieces of vacant property on both sides of this. If I own that property and it's zoned HC2, what would, would it be unreasonable for me to request an HC3 zoning classification and receive it if your client gets the HC3 under this circumstance?
Sure. I don't know if I could say it would be unreasonable, but I think that if I sat in your shoes and I realized that the reason for the zoning change in this instance was only because, number one, the project had been in place for 30 years, and number two, the council determined to take that away as a permitted use. So to answer the question, if I had either track on the side, I would not be able to come to the table and say, I've had a project here for 30 years, and you're now taking away the use that I've made of my property, you're diminishing my investment, you've got my insurance company scared, my banker wants to jump off the third floor, et cetera. So I don't know if it would be unreasonable, but I think you'd have and the council would have lots of things to look at.
Well, I think if, in regards to, if the property was zoned appropriately, which I believe would be multifamily, I can't see where the insurance company or the bank or anyone else would have a problem with, with handling.
Well, but, but if I could, because I had some of these discussions with the council. If it were zoned multifamily, what about the track on each side then? Should they likewise be entitled to receive multifamily zoning? And I don't think that was the direction...
Yeah, but, okay, I see your point.
That was, that was some of the discussion that was held as to why keep it into the highway zoning classification. It's because it's on a four-lane divided, and really in this parish, that section of the highway is kind of state-of-the-art in terms of its width, its J-turns, its decel lanes, et cetera. So I think the thinking was, is that keeping those strips zoned highway commercial was preferable to looking at a multifamily zone.
My only, to come back to that, would be, these two properties on either side, if we, if they wanted to go multifamily, would be basically downgrading what the nature of that area is. And the nature of this road is extremely high commercial activity, medical, shopping centers, and things of that nature. And under that scenario, one would not, I would think, be inclined to want to develop multifamily on that property, but rather, in fact, I would, you know, as somebody who looks at real estate from a development standpoint, I could see, I could make an argument to say, I'd take that entire strip right there and turn it into a very large shopping center area. The issue I think I have with this is the proximity of the residential back of it. Whether it's HC3 or HC2, when you're backing up to residential like this backs up to, even with the buffers, you're creating, you're upgrading to a larger commercial possibility. The property could be used for something other than multifamily, and it could be of development that would be less attractive to the residents that are in place behind it. That's my only concern. I understand what you've gone through relative to this situation and working with the council, and maybe I'm off-base, but zoning in this situation isn't, it's not a cookie-cutter situation. This is a specific situation here with residential and the nature of the road in front of it. And the nature of the road in front of it is commercial activity, not really residential. So from a multifamily standpoint, you know, to go to HC3, that to me is kind of the flaw in this situation, but I understand why it is what it is. But I'm just, I'm having, I'm having problems, a problem in my justifying an upgrade to a, enlarging the commercial potential of this property. I'm visualizing that complex not being there, and I'm visualizing something else going on that property that would be less attractive and less advantageous to the property owners that are adjacent to it. I guess that's my point.
Could I make one?
Sure.
And I appreciate your comments, as you well know. I really believe the size of the parcel and the number of units is the best answer I would have to those concerns, meaning that if it was three acres or five acres, or if it were 50 acre, 50 units or 100, I would understand a concern about the potential of the track. But when you take a look at lot coverage, which as you well know is 50% max, you look at height, then you look at parking needs, buffer requirements, it's really hard to imagine that that 1.7-acre parcel could be overdeveloped. Now, the point about the two parcels on each side, I would have to think that the residents of Timber Branch, the councilman, and this commission will be very vigilant if someone wanted to change the zoning of either of those parcels to create the potential that you're referring to, something that might not be appropriate next to Timber Branch.
Well, they already are. HC3 is, they're asking for HC3 right next door, right now, and it's been postponed for one month. So the ball's already rolling on this thing. And that's the problem I have with this.
Okay. Well, that was the council that made that request. You're aware of that?
Fine.
Okay. I wasn't trying to be, I wasn't trying to be flippant.
No, no, no. I understand, and I, and I don't take it that way either, but it is a fact. And so, to that extent. Well, then, Mr. Shane, let me ask you a question, if you don't mind. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
All left questions.
So it is just, is it your position that the council is supporting the request for HC, HC3 zoning next to the, to the property you're representing?
Yes. So, let's, I'll give you the history as it relates to that track, if it's okay with the chairman.
Yes.
So at the time these discussions began months ago, my client had a contract to purchase that parcel. And that was before the council had made its final decision as it relates to how the UDC would read whether apartments would be a permitted use in that track or not. So at the time, the council referred, are there about six properties, maybe, that have been referred? Six properties have been referred. Because Mr. Smith had already met with my client onsite, knew that he had an opportunity to purchase that piece, he agreed to put it in the net of properties, if you will, that was gonna be there. Since then, my client no longer has a contract to purchase that adjoining property. So if the council decides to go forward, or this commission looks at that case or whatever, but...
So because the 30-day contract left, why do you just move?
There is no, my client advised me maybe two weeks ago that the contract had expired, that he wasn't interested in expanding, and that he was only interested in protecting his investment, and that's why this piece is before you this evening.
Anything else, Ron?
No, no, I'm finished. Thank you.
Okay. I'm gonna turn your light off. Commissioner Seeger?
Mr. Chairman, I believe there's a motion on the table. I don't think that motion's been seconded yet. If not, I'd like to second the motion to approve.
Yeah. I don't think it was seconded either, so we've got a second now. Commissioner Gaines?
I have a question for, I have a question for legal. On all of these properties, do they have to be vacated from the moratorium on multifamily?
I'd have to look into that. I don't really answer the question.
I mean, yeah, I just, because the moratorium on multifamily is still in effect. So, my question was, is that, do these properties, is that, is that necessitate them being vacated from the moratorium before the, the multifamily designation is given to them, or is that only in regards that they have to apply for a permit?
Well, since we're only reviewing, that would be something that could be fixed.
Let me get your, let me get your mic on.
Since we're only a reviewing and recommending body, that could be fixed at the council level.
Okay. So they would have to vacate it prior to voting on it, to approve it at the council level?
I would have to look into that, but either way, it could be fixed at the council level.
Okay. That was the only comment I had. Thank you.
That was Aldon?
Yep.
Brittany?
Yes.
Robert?
I do have a question.
For Mr. Shane. We were not given any kind of site map or anything for this property. Do you by any chance know how much of the property is covered by concrete, how much of it is impervious surfaces as it stands right now?
No, I don't know. I don't know, have figures as to that. I think the only thing you have is that Google, but...
Okay. So, and what year, you said, I see 1990 was the original ordinance, switching it over to A6?
I feel comfortable in saying it's approximately 30 years old.
So to my understanding, Helen and Erin, correct me if I'm wrong, but that predates our zoning ordinance as even the last ones. So, it, more than likely, is there's more coverage on the property. There were less restrictions on this property as there are now in our code as it stands today, especially with the UDC rewrite.
Absolutely.
So my understanding of this is that if, you can, wait, I have a question. If, rather than a hurricane or a fire or something were to come through and unfortunately destroy these buildings, if Mr. Burns decided that he wanted to evict every single person off the premises and just raise it and rebuild, he would not be allowed to do so in a larger footprint than what he currently has there, correct?
He would still have to abide by the maximum of 50% of lot coverage.
If I could just clarify, the new Unified Development Code requires 70/30 ratio to pervious, impervious coverage for commercial sites. We've never had that before, so they would have to be compliant with the new regulations.
Okay. That would be my only concern, is that, you know, if, and I understand where everyone's coming from. I know this is, this was confusing for me, too. This is my first meeting. I had to call Helen and Erin and make sure that I understood what I was reading, so I get you guys. But I understand that the concern is less for, for the audience that, you know, if something were to happen to the buildings and they needed to be repaired, you guys are more concerned that he could come in and essentially rebuild it bigger, more homes in, more in it, correct?
And I don't think there's anything, and I'd like staff to comment on this, but I don't think there's anything in the new code...
Well, no, that's what I'm saying, voluntarily. If, if it were voluntary, it's actually, the code now is more strict than it was when this apartment complex was actually initially constructed.
Well, when you say voluntary, but I mean, whether it's blown down, burned down, or torn down, the rebuild has have to be pursuant to the new code.
Correct.
And so, the requirements are such that I don't believe you're gonna have more density, greater lot coverage, less buffer, less setbacks, less parking. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I mean, that's not my appreciation of where the changes have been made. So, I don't believe that the impact, and that's really what this discussion's about, what is the impact of the use to the abutting residential district. I don't believe that the recommendation to a change of zone creates a potential greater impact.
Anything else? Okay. Commissioner Narcisse?
I kind of concur a lot with what Mr. Troncoso said. I have a question for staff. What is the practical difference between highway commercial and medium multifamily? What is the practical brass tacks difference?
I would say medium multifamily allows specific uses that are related to multifamily in, single family and two-family. Highway commercial obviously allows for a lot more permitted uses.
I, I, I go with what Mr. Troncoso said, if, what's that?
Thank you.
If somebody wants to take that HC2 and go down to just multifamily, it would be a degrading of the possibilities there. So by nature, it would just kind of keep it at highway commercial and no more intense. I think HC3, if it serves the same purpose of keeping it multifamily, why not just go multifamily? It just makes clear sense to me. And I understand the proximity to the highways and everything else, but if the goal is to keep it multifamily, we have a zone for that, in my opinion.
Okay. Commissioner Martino?
Yeah. So, great point. That's what I've been thinking. I, I'd like to relay that point. Personally, I think with the new, the new UDC code in place, this, this development currently, within the last five years, is, in my opinion, no longer appropriate. I, I see these children get on and off the bus every morning, every afternoon. I drive that corridor at 7:30, and then again about 3:30. I see the danger, and I'm glad it's not my children, and I hope that nothing happens with those 20-something homes because of the increased traffic and... because of the increased traffic and development that is mostly commercial. This is a lot of folks coming and going down that corridor. I'm not here to discuss that. I do backtracking. So I believe multifamily is more appropriate. I don't think that there's a reason to go HC3. I think there may be some, some readjustment or decisions to come back to that request. So that would be my, my very long-winded comment, but that's where I am. Thank you.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second to approve. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Please vote.
Motion to approve to HC3 Highway Commercial District fails.
Okay. Thank you. Well, Jeff knows that. Oh, the residents? Okay. Yeah, this will probably be approved, appealed to the council, so you'll have one more round at it anyway. Okay? All right, let's see, 3917 was postponed, so we go to 3918, which is the same verbiage as we had here, but it's a different location. Existing zoning is HC2 Highway Commercial. Proposed zoning is HC3 Highway Commercial. Location parcel located on the east side of Voters Road, Slide L. Ward 8, District 14. It's 3.43 acres. Petitioner is Saint Tammany Parish Government. Owner is King Square Properties LLC. It's Council District 14. Okay, we've already had the staff comments on it, so... Is someone here representing King Square Properties LLC? All right, good deal. Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Chairman. My name is Tim Fandle, and I'm the owner of King Square Properties in Slide L.
Okay. You have anything you'd like to...
Well, the property was built in 1984 by Pat Merrimon as condos for the World's Fair, and has been apartments ever since. They're all one-bedroom apartments, so there's really not too many children allowed because of being only two occupants per unit. So if there's a single mom, there could be a child, but very, very, there may be only one child in the apartment complex because of the one-bedroom rule. And I, you know, I found out about this after being posted on my property. I didn't know nothing about this until my property was posted. I did finally receive the letter, but days after it was posted, so I didn't get no notice. And I have no problem with going to HC3. Everything on the side of me, it's HC2. It used to be Hillbeham next to me, and then now it's ACR Roofing Supply. The other side is vacant. Down the street from me, it's on the front of the road, you've got the Montagro World with the Montagro beads, and it's all commercial all along there. And like I say, it's been over there for over 40 years.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Anybody else want to speak before or against?
Okay. Anyone else in the audience wish to speak on this item? I'm going to close it to the public and bring it back to the commission. Commissioner Arsemont.
A move that we approve.
Motion by Commissioner Arsemont to approve. Commissioner Gaines.
This, this looks like the same conundrum that we had in the last one, where it's a, except this one just borders up against the interstate. Is that the only difference? Staff, is it really just that this one borders the interstate versus a highway?
Essentially, yes.
So, yeah, it butts up against residential. It's bookended on both sides by HC2. So multifamily would not be appropriate usage in this one either? Staff?
I mean...
What was the determination for?
It's all the same reasons. It's on a service road. It's flanked on the north and south sides by HC2 zoning. We feel that it was appropriate to keep it highway commercial.
I'll let everybody else comment. I'll second.
Okay, second by Commissioner Gaines. Commissioner Seager.
Call for a vote.
Commissioner Narcisse.
Looks like the same situation.
Oh, we need, we need to have a second. You called the question?
Yeah, we have a second. We already have a second.
No, but call the question. Who seconded it?
I did. He called for, he called for a vote, that's part of the treaty.
So now we have to take a vote, whether to call the question and vote.
Okay. But once the question's been called, that shuts off any comment.
So now we're going to vote to take the vote, to take the vote.
All right. So we've got a motion and a second, and then a call for the question. That requires a vote, right?
Yes.
Okay. All right, please vote.
The motion to call for a vote carries.
So now we take a vote. Vote on the item.
Okay, we've got a motion.
Yeah, now we vote on the item.
We've got a motion and a second?
Yes.
Okay. Please vote. Again.
Point of, point of order?
Point of order.
Yes.
What is the motion? What are we calling for a vote?
Now, we have a motion, we had a motion and a second to call the question, which was to stop debate. The commission voted and approved to stop debate. So now we're actually voting on the item, the agenda item, to approve.
All right, you clear?
Yeah.
Okay, please vote.
Motion to approve...
Is it six? I'm sorry.
A majority.
It's a majority, okay.
Motion to approve fails. I'm sorry, excuse me. It's six, yeah, I'm sorry, I apologize. Motion to approve carries.
All right. You ready? Okay, we go to item nine now, right?
Yes.
All right, item nine is 2024-3920-ZC. Existing zoning is HC2 Highway Commercial District. Proposed zoning is ML Low Multiple Family Residential District. Parcel located on the east side of Ponch train Drive, being lot 153 Eden Isle Subdivision. Ward nine, District 13. Excuse me. It's .77 acres. Petitioner is Saint Tammany Parish Government. The owner is Frederick Boulier, and Council District is 13. This is the same verbiage that we've had previously. So, Mr. Troncoso?
Oh, no, I don't see if anybody in the public wants to speak for or against.
Okay, anybody in the public wish to speak either for or against on this? Okay, seeing none? Rob, did you drop off?
Yes, I did.
Okay. All right, Commissioner Seager.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Seager to approve. Commissioner Arsemont?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arsemont. Any further discussion? Please vote.
I have a single one vote. Motion to approve carries.
All right, we go to item 10. This is 3924-3921-ZC. Existing zoning is HC2 Highway Commercial District. Proposed zoning is ML Low Multiple Family District. Location parcel located on the east side of Ponch Train Drive, being lot 154 Eden Isle Subdivision. Unit one, Ward nine, District 13. It's .44 acres. Petitioners, Saint Tammany Parish Government. The owner is Roland Vandaway and others, Council District 13. Staff, anyone in the audience wish to speak on this? Seeing no one, I'm going to bring it back to the commission. Commissioner Troncoso.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Troncoso to approve. Commissioner Martino?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Martino. Commissioner Arsemont?
No, sir, mistake.
All right. So we have a motion and a second to approve. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Please vote.
Motion to approve carries.
Item number nine is part of the apartments, if you want to skip to that.
Yep. That's exactly what I was looking at. All right, we have one more of the apartment group. It's item 13 on the agenda. It's cases 2024-3929-ZC. Existing zoning is HC2 Highway Commercial District. Proposed zoning is MH High Multi Family District. Location parcel located on the east side of Ponch Train Drive, lot 100 and lot 101, Unit one, Eden Isle Subdivision. Ward nine, District 13. It's .77 acres. Petitioner, Saint Tammany Parish Government. The owner is Royal Eden Property LLC, Council District 13. Anyone in the audience wish to speak on this item? Seeing no one, I'll close it to the public and bring it back to the commission. Commissioner Arsemont.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Arsemont to approve. Commissioner Narcisse.
Quick question, why is it high instead of medium or low? What's the difference?
The parcel size is .77 acres. So for the density of this parcel, it required the MH high, which allows more density.
Gotcha.
Yes, sir, yeah. The MH high on a .77 acre parcel would allow 22 units.
By the way, that was John's question. I was smart enough to know that. I second.
Commissioner Gaines.
I'm good, thank you.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Please vote.
Motion to approve carries. And can y'all confirm who seconded that motion? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll go back to item 11. Case is 2024-3922-ZC. Existing zoning, S1 Suburban Residential District. Proposed zoning, S1 Suburban Residential District and MHO Manufactured Housing Overlay. Location parcel located on the northwest corner of Dogwood Street and Rose Street, Covington, being lots eight, nine, and 10, square seven, Abita Nursery. Ward three, District two, it's .29 acres. The petitioner is Willie L. Laurent Jr., and the owner is Willie L. Laurent Jr., Council District two. Staff?
This is a request to rezone the property to manufactured housing overlay to allow for the placement of a mobile home on a property. As you can see on your staff report, there's a list of many lots that have been rezoned throughout the years to manufactured housing overlay. So this is an area where there are multiple manufactured homes in that subdivision.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Laurent? Good evening, sir.
Good evening, good evening, good evening. My wife and I purchased this home back in '22 because it was a serious eyesore to our neighborhood. People were dumping their trash on it, leaving multiple vehicles on it and stuff, so we decided that we would purchase and clean it up. After a couple thousands of dollars, we've got it. Got people coming to us and thanking us for really clearing this area. Well, our baby girl wanted to put a mobile home there, but it was one there before, so we had it torn down and to bring her one in there. So that's what we want to get that changed for us.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone in the audience wish to speak in favor? Anyone wish to speak against? I'm going to close it to the public and bring it back to the commission. Commissioner Gaines.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Gaines to approve. Commissioner Robert?
I live in this area, motion seconded.
Second by Commissioner Robert. Commissioner, okay, everybody cleared. So we have a motion and a second to approve. Please vote.
Motion to approve carries.
Thank you. All right, we go to item 12 on the agenda. Case is 2024-3926-ZC. Existing zoning, CBF1 Community Base Facility. Proposed zoning is HC2 Highway Commercial District. Partial located on the north side of Manzella Drive and on the east side of Marlboro Drive, and on the west side of Frederick Drive, being 39299 Manzella Drive, Slide L. Ward eight, District 13. It's one acre. The petitioner is Otis Favre Jr. The, that's the petitioner, and the owner is Wheels Property LLC. And it's Council District 13. Staff?
This parcel is currently located at the corner of Marlboro and Manzella and developed with an existing building, which some of you may know as being the skating rink that was constructed many years ago. And it was rezoned at some point in the past to CBF1. However, I'm not sure if it, a use listed under the CBF1 was ever occupied or developed on the site. So at this time, we have a request to rezone to HC2 Highway Commercial zoning. And the objective of the request is to be able to renovate the building into an office warehouse.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Favre, using the audience? Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Robert Hamel with KB Kaufman Construction.
Joseph Schneider, Architect at Slide L.
Please repeat the names again.
Robert Hamel.
And Joseph Schneider.
Okay. All right. You have anything to add to the staff report?
Mr. Otis had purchased the building, went in to move his staff of accounting, receiving clerks and that from his dealerships that are close to the lake to an area that was higher ground, and that was it.
Okay.
About six people.
The existing building is about 15,000 square feet. Was an old skating rink. About 11,000 is open area right now that's used for storage, and about 4,000 square feet of existing offices and living area, and about 3,000 full living area on a second floor. So the new owner wants to bring in his accounting staff. Part of the warehouse would be a conditioned record storage, and upstairs would be for... And upstairs would be for future offices. There's no addition, no exterior work on the building, no additions, strictly renovation on the inside and enhancing of the exterior of the building. Of course, new landscaping and parking, on-site parking to conform to all the passion requirements.
Okay. Thank you. All right, anyone else wish to speak in favor? All right, I've got a couple of cards here that are against Bert Pichon. Good evening.
Good evening. Commissioners and staff.
My name is Bert Pichon. I live at five-eight four-six-four Marlborough Drive. If you look out my window, there's a vacant lot between me and Manzella where the manicured lawn, there's nothing at all on it. And all I see is that big building, which used to be a skating rink. It's not a pretty sight, but it's a residence. It's been a residence ever since it's been a skating rink. They did do some storage in it, but it's been a residence. It's not on the highway. It's on a cross street in a small subdivision. And to the north is residential, to the east is residential, to the south is residential, and to the west, the, about the northern half of that property is commercial across the street. It's a car wash. And on the south half across the street at the corner of Marlborough and Manzella, there's a lot, a vacant lot that to my knowledge is still in the parish and residential. Now, I might need Helen to help me on that. I don't know if it ever been changed to anything else. That corner lot. So I'm seeing to the west, I believe only, only halfway across the property is commercial on the other side.
Okay.
It's, I don't know how far it is from the high school, Pope John Paul High School. If they will change hands or whatever they change their mind, they could put a ballroom there if it's H.C. two. And I don't know if it's a thousand feet away from the school. It's pretty close. And, uh, I wouldn't like that. And I'm, I'm just against it. I don't, they've been, it's going to open a can of worms. If they make that lot commercial, it's going to go up and down in our neighborhood. I think Gauze Boulevard, that should be commercial, all commercial property. I agree with that. The, the car wash is on Gauze, actually. And, uh, but it's a small subdivision. And I think I read where he wants to make an office and storage area out of it. And I think he could do that with the zone, with the current zoning. I'm not sure.
I don't believe he can, but we'll get staff to...
But I, I just, I just don't think it belongs in there. We've been fighting this for years.
Okay.
And, uh, I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Uh, the other cards that I had didn't wish to speak, uh, so that's the reason I didn't call those off. Yes, sir?
I'd like to speak.
Did you fill out a card?
No, I didn't. I didn't know I had to fill one out. But I could speak if you didn't fill it out.
Go ahead and speak and then fill the card out.
Oh, hey, good evening, everybody. Uh, my name is Mark Jenkins. I live across the street from Mr. Pichon, basically catty corner from the building that they're trying to rezone. It's probably a hundred yards, seventy-five yards from my home. I've been in Slide L for fifty years. Uh, when I moved here, I had an aunt and uncle that lived in Robert Park subdivision. And when I got ready to build, I remembered that little development as being a nice, peaceful, settled area. That's the main reason I went and built there. Uh, as far as what these gentlemen are proposing to do, personally, I don't have a problem with that. The problem I have is going into rezoning. It opens up Pandora's box for convenience stores, clubs, auto repair shops, and on and on and on. And going along with what Mr. Pichon said, the building is just recessed too far back in the residential area for anything like that. If I knew for a fact that they were going to open up a office building there for finances and secretaries for the rest of my life, that would be great. But there's no guarantee in that. There's no guarantee that I won't go to bed one night and wake up with a diesel mechanic shot seventy-five yards from my house. That's why I'm against the whole rezoning thing. If they could do it without the rezoning, I probably wouldn't have that big of an issue with it. But once it's rezoned, it's a done deal.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Favre, y'all have a rebuttal? It's two minutes?
Three.
Three? Three-minute rebuttal.
Yes, a quick response. The lot issue, I believe, is part of the property adjacent to the building that's being re-subdivided right now. The lot on the corner of Frederick and Manzella. I was talking about an empty lot. I think that's a lot part of this development, I believe. Also with the community-based facility that allows churches, fraternal order buildings, a lot of traffic, a lot of congestion. Um, our, our project is, I would say, office space, office storage, eighteen max fully developed parking on-site and green space, nine to five business hours. So we don't see a lot of impact into the area. In fact, probably less impact than what it's zoned for right now, being a community-based facility site.
Yeah, I think it could be a wedding venue or a church or something to that effect where you would have multiple people coming at one time for one event in comparison to just a small office staff doing accounting work and that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Any other comments now? All right, I'm going to close it to the public and bring it back to the commission. Commissioner Narcisse.
Uh, question for staff, why not neighborhood a commercial? Is there a reason for that?
This is actually what we were looking at and, and, um, we, we had a meeting with the petitioner. Maybe if, if Mr. Chairman, may we ask the petitioner to come back to the podium?
Yes.
Just as a point of clarification, the use of the building, you know, we talked about an office warehouse, but this is not a warehouse of, of where there's going to be, uh, maybe, maybe you can clarify what is going to be stored into the building?
From what I understood, it would be files and things that are stored at the dealership that's close to the lake at an area that's larger, I mean, higher ground and away from water.
So we're not referring to storing of any parts of, of vehicles or any types of...
There's no truck traffic.
Deliveries or anything? It's just mainly an office?
That's correct.
Okay. But due to the size of the building, I, I think that there might be a, a need to look into maybe going to an H.C. one. Uh, what's the size of the building?
Fifteen thousand square feet.
Fifteen thousand square feet. Um, so, I mean, if you would be agreeable, would you accept to maybe go to a lesser zoning district of maybe H.C. one?
I thought we had to go to H.C. two because of the size of the building.
But the fifteen thousand square foot?
Yes, ma'am.
Let us verify this right now. We, we, we're all trying to get used to the new zoning right now, so.
Yeah, my question was why not N.C. neighborhood commercial? Why would N.C. four not be an option? There you go, that's what it's for. Yeah, so why not N.C. four?
We're verifying, Mr. Narcisse.
Okay, sorry.
As you know, this is all...
Once again, I, I get my questions from John, so. That's another John question, man.
That was a good question, John.
We're getting to that, that zoning district, um...
It was my question, but you asked it a second time. I feel like the need to sing right now, I got the mic.
There's more warehouse.
Aw, man, that's all I know. I got a four-year-old, come on.
Actually, the G.C. one would off, would allow to... Is it seven?
Twenty thousand.
The G.C. one would allow for up to seventeen thousand. So if the main use is for a general office, I think that G.C. one might be an option here. But, but is the warehouse the main function of the building? That's where we're trying to establish.
No, ma'am, the office.
What's the percentage that's going to be used for the warehouse?
The footprint of buildings are fifteen, about ten-eight, ten-thousand eight hundred is open area right now. About half of that is going to become conditioned space, records.
Okay.
Auto dealership, which is on Howza Beach Road.
So, so this is the reason why we need to go to a highway commercial? Because half of it is going to be used as, you know, for warehouse?
Yeah, but that warehouse is still office storage. It's not, it's not, it's still...
So by seven thousand square feet of the building will be office.
Uh, it just seems like it's still just storing files. I don't think it's a warehouse. I think it's a closet that happens to be big.
Yeah, it is a big building, you know, on your skating rink. In fact, the wood floors are still there from the skating rink.
That's awesome.
And the, uh, storage areas.
I think for the protection of the residents, I think going to that G.C. one would be the best solution for everybody involved.
Just to clarify, G.C. doesn't allow warehouse?
Yeah, the G.C. does not allow any warehouse, and that's the reason we need to probably go to an H.C.
Can we change it, the, the nomenclature of warehouse to office storage? It's storage, it's not a warehouse. I mean, is it, it's essentially going to be storage.
Wait, 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 let's let Helen in there.
I think that this is a nature of the building itself, that being half of, of it is a warehouse.
Half of it is a skating rink, they're going to use as storage, not necessarily a, I'm, I'm sorry, Ms. Helen, I'm just trying to clarify.
I think at this point, it's for the petitioner to make their, their, you know, to decide if they want to amend to an H.C. one or to a G.C.
I, is the difference, just for clarification, is the difference a warehouse versus a storage? When we boil it all down?
According to the way they're describing it, is most of it or half of it is going to be used as warehousing.
Okay, Mr. petitioners. Can we call that storage area a storage area and not a warehouse?
A large office.
A large office space where you store files?
Most of it's going to be conditioned space, you know, temperature control and for records.
For, to store records, like a storage facility of records?
Yes, protocol dealership.
Mr. Chairman, would you mind if I asked a question?
Yes, go ahead.
If, if you all were to get the zoning and move forward with the interior renovation of the building and someone purchased it a few years from now, would they be able to move cubicles in and start operating as an office in your warehouse portion of the, the building?
Yes, it's open space.
And it's conditioned?
Uh, it will be. It's drywall. Not right now, it will be.
Okay. And I think that's a matter of what, what they call the plans. I mean, if they call it a warehouse, then we have to assume that's what the use is. But if it's conditioned space that could easily, you know, function as an office without any interior renovations, then that's what it is.
Unless they fit to say the building will be renovated. It was fine more is concerned. It's all interior renovation.
Right, and so that space in question is going to be conditioned and able to be used at an office in a free, as a future point?
Oh, yes, definitely. Yeah, easily, be conditioned. It's all open. You can play petitions in there.
Are you okay with a G.C. one, which is a, basically a neighborhood commercial?
If it accommodates the new ordinances.
It would have to be re-advertized.
Okay.
If you're downzoning, if you're downzoning, you do not have to re-advertize.
I think, just in my opinion, H.C. two, they have to. And I can urge them to make that...
You can.
I can. Okay, in my opinion, H.C. two is way up here. G.C. one is closer to what you need and will function. I, as John told me, I can urge you to change that to a G.C. one appeal if you would like to.
Do another hearing, do another advertising.
We won't have to, we won't have to re-advertize, we can do it here.
There seems to be a lot of, of back and forth about what zoning should it be. Uh, you know, we can postpone it for a month, let y'all get with staff, and come back with a, I'm going to say a little harder, uh...
With that...
Item.
I'm sorry.
So that we know for sure what we're doing, okay?
That sounds like a smart...
Is that acceptable?
I think that right now, they've made it very clear that while the, the, this is for you to make the decision, that there's a major portion of it is going to be as storage. And, you know, this is pretty much a use that would fit under the, the H.C. one highway commercial zoning. So you're welcome to postpone the case if you would like us to get back together with the owner. But the, the portion of storage is, is the element here.
I would like to make a motion to postpone so that we can look at it and further talk to your owners and see where we can come in middle ground. Right. And it's not H.C. one, it's H.C. two that you're asking for, and I don't think that's, that's right at all.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion to postpone for until the next meeting or thirty days, however, we got a word at...
Yeah, we'll get with planning and zoning.
Yeah, we'll get with planning and zoning and, yeah.
Pardon?
Yeah.
Awesome.
All right, Helen, you and Erin, we're all on the same page here?
Yes, sir.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Okay. Do you folks in the audience understand what we're trying to get done for, for y'all and for them? Okay. All right. So we have a motion to go to...
We have a motion to postpone.
To postpone, that's right.
That's, that's it.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
That was... Robert?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so we got, Brittany, you're still on the board.
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to say that I did calculate the square footage prior to the meeting. It is over seventeen thousand square feet, just slightly. Um, and it looks like G.C. one allows under twenty. So if N.C. four is the cutoff, if it's seventeen thousand, that it would have to go G.C. one. But it does look like it, it fits within that pretty, pretty well. That's it.
Okay. So we've got a motion. Brittany, you have anything else?
No, sir.
Okay. So we've got a motion to postpone to the next meeting, which is basically one month. Right?
Yes, and a second.
And a sec. Please vote.
Motion to postpone for one month carries.
Thank y'all. Where?
Yeah, I will call...
Yeah, that's, uh... Yeah, that should be the...
Talk about both H.C. one and...
Thirty-nine twenty-nine.
That's it, that's the last case.
That was the last.